is being recorded. In past meetings when we met in person, we opened with a moment of silence. Although we haven't been doing that in our virtual format, I would like to make an exception for tonight. In light of the recent death of George Floyd and the raw pain and fear that is being felt by people of color in our community.
I guess she's the only one that died, right?
I guess. Cut off this. Disgrace that's being called on the rest of our country.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Gray?
I don't use, sorry.
You're right, okay. Erdman?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Marlowe?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Stichellic?
Here.
Nom?
Here.
Bux?
Here.
All present.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I want to publicly announce that the board met for executive session on May 13th to discuss personnel issues. The board will meet for executive session next week, June 9th, to discuss personnel issues as well. To all those joining us virtually, we thank you for attending this meeting in our temporary virtual format. Please know that all webinar community members will. Community member participants will remain on mute during the meeting unless they have put in a request to speak during the public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by 6:25 this evening. Though I was informed that there were no requests for public comment tonight. Moving on. My last one is in spring. Sorry about that. Alright, moving on, um, we, our first, um, item of action tonight is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt, to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, this is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Moving on to item D, we have our superintendent's report for Dr. Messinger.
Yeah, the big thing is we are wrapping up the school year. It feels like it, we've been out for a while, but in reality, uh, June 4th is our last day for students to finish up and turn in assignments. Uh, we gave them that week's period of time as we had been throughout the closure to, to, to get those things in. And teachers are actually wrapping up grades. Uh, graduation on Thursday night, hoping we don't get thunder showers, but, uh, 7:30 uh, will be graduation and for those that cannot attend, we're limiting at two graduates and, and, and family, but if they cannot attend, we're gonna be, there will be a live, uh, link for that on the website through our YouTube channel. Um, we've actually started to work on, uh, some summer items. We've, uh, started cleaning. Uh, the custodians have done a fantastic job. The gyms are done, they're waxed. If, if we get to the point where kids can come back and begin athletics over the summer, they're ready to go uh, for that. Uh, we've, we've been working on bus routes in preparation for next year. Um, and with the intention of trying to get a head start on some things, uh, so that we can be prepared for anything that the state chooses to throw at us. My understanding is that there's going to be some information released tomorrow about opening of schools next fall. I know the governor has said we'll be back. We are holding him to that. I think we are ready to be back. I think parents are ready for their kids to be back and I think kids are excited about the. I know that my own son mentioned that as much as he typically doesn't like to get up early, go to school, he's tired of this online stuff. So he, even he is ready to come back. So we will be preparing for that and maybe some changes that come along with it, uh, depending on what those guidelines are at the time. But, uh, we've, we got a head start on some things so that we'll be able to begin those discussions and we will start that next week. That's the end of my report.
I'm not getting along with Zoom tonight. Thank you for that report. Uh, next on our agenda for tonight is old business. Is there any other, any old business for discussion this evening? Alright, hearing none, we will move ahead. Um, what would normally be our next item is the public input session, but there were no requests for this evening. And so we move on to item G, um, discussion items for board action. Um, it was previously scheduled that the, that next week we would have a meeting if necessary, um, though that is not the case. Uh, we have all of the projected items on the agenda for tonight. And so tonight's meeting will run a little bit differently in the sense that we will discuss the items publicly and then we will move on to asking for a motion for the items, like a motion for approval. And so we start, um, with items one and two and I'll hand that off to Dr. Messinger.
Yes, beginning with number one and two, uh, number one is simply approving the minutes for the May 5th committee meeting and the May 12th board meeting. And number two is the, uh, payment of vouchers, uh, for the month of May.
Is there any discussion regarding these items? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve items one and two on the agenda?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. A motion has passed. We will move on to item number three, Dr. Messinger.
Item number three is the final budget, establishing total expenditures and appropriations of the general fund in the amount of forty million, two hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred eleven dollars for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021.
Is there any discussion regarding the adoption of the final budget? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adopt the final budget as presented?
I move to adopt the final budget as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Erdman?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Marlowe?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stichellic?
No.
Nom?
Yes.
Bux?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no, motion carried.
Thank you. We will move on to items four through fifteen, Dr. Messinger.
Yes, I'll go through the next set of things. A lot of these things are annual things that we do, um, in the month of June. Uh, number four is, is to approve the listed service agreements for the 2021 school year. Number five is to approve the special educating, education contracting agreements uh, with IU 13 and the London County Consortium. Uh, item six is to approve the LBC clinical education agreement. Item seven is to approve the London County CTC budget for 2020 dash 2021. Uh, number eight is to approve resolution number six, 2020, to authorize, uh, me to sign any and all contracts, agreements, grants, and licenses with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PIMA, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Number nine is to approve the ATSI non-title one plan for the 2021 school year. That plan is a plan put in place to address, um, the, uh, learning support needs, uh, that were brought through, uh, testing results, uh, a couple of years ago. Uh, we worked on that plan this year, however, with, uh, the suspension of texting, uh, testing, excuse me. Uh, we will be, uh, renewing that plan for the upcoming year. Uh, item 10 is to approve the stock and leader, uh, approve stock and leaders as a district solicitor uh, from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. Uh, item 11 is to, uh, approve Stechbeck Engineering to conduct the land survey. Uh, as outlined in the proposal dated April 22nd, 2020. Uh, item 12 is to adopt the resolution implementing the Homestead-Farmstead amount, subject to change based on state funding and school district board approval. Uh, approve 2021 tax military. I wanted to just make a quick comment about that. There were, there was quite a bit of talk that they were going to reduce that amount due to uh, gambling revenue being reduced. However, uh, we were assured last night and again today that the state has corrected that problem. They're going to use some COVID funds, I believe, and transfer uh, the amount that they were short, uh, to provide the full, uh, Homestead, uh, Farmstead amounts. So that was good news. Um, item 13 is to approve, approve host or give hardening company for football insurance in the amount of three thousand, four hundred ten dollars and voluntary student accident insurance for the 2021 school year. Item 14 is to authorize the business office staff to make budget transfers as needed for the year-end audit, which is, uh, typical at this point in time in the year. And then item number 15 is to approve Rachel Stichellic to serve as PSBA voting delegate for the delegate assembly meeting to occur November 7th, 2020. You're muted, Michelle.
Goodness. Is there any discussion regarding these items?
Um, real quickly on item nine, uh, I was looking over, uh, the plan and I would just note that, uh, Mr. Cobal is mentioned as a lead person for a few of those items. We'll just need to make sure that gets updated with, uh, whoever's replacement might be.
Yes, thank you.
Actually, that's, you know, it's unusual for me to comment before an action item is voted on, but I just wanted to extend my appreciation for the administration's recommendation for renewal of stock and leader and indicate, uh, what an absolute pleasure it has been to be a counselor to the board over this past year. Um, I'm really excited about what's to come and I hope I'm a part of that.
Is there any other discussion for this evening? Or for these items? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve items four through fifteen on the budget and finance, um, calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Moving on to extracurricular activities, items 16 and 17, Dr. Messinger.
Two extracurricular items, uh, the 2021 high school musical production, uh, would be Annie. And also, uh, we have a list of fall, winter, and spring coaches, uh, for you to approve. We are certainly hoping that, uh, the June 30th deadline on, on sports, uh, ends and and kids can, can get back with their coaches working out. I know they're, they're, uh, really anxious to do that. I'm sure the band can probably follow shortly after that as well. Um, and I'm sure they're excited to get going as well, but hopefully that'll, that'll be the case, but, uh, the coaches are listed there.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding these items? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve items 16 and 17 as presented?
Yes, I move to approve items 16 and 17 as presented.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has carried. Moving on to curriculum items, Dr. Messinger.
Two items under curriculum, uh, one would be the final adoption of the curriculum, Advanced Placement Language and Composition in Health 10. And then also the final adoption of the textbook for Advanced Placement, United States History, called Fabric of a Nation.
Is there any discussion regarding these two items? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve items 18 and 19 as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has carried. Moving on to items regarding human relations, Dr. Messinger.
Uh, yes, quite a few things under human relations. I'll start with professional substitutes. There are three professional substitutes that we'd like to add to, uh, our list. You'll notice that all three of those are retirements for this year, so they're willing to come back and, and do some work for us even though they retire. Um, number 21, we have two resignations, Mr. Curtis, a custodian, uh, and also Mr. Cobal. Uh, I'd like to thank both of them for their service to Northern London. Um, really appreciate, uh, the help. Uh, Mr. Curtis has been working as of late as school has been closed to try to, uh, uh, to clean initially and, uh, to, to disinfect, um, and now to, uh, to clean. So appreciate that. And Mr. Cobal has been, uh, I believe at every meal distribution assisting with that as well. So would like to thank those two individuals. Um, there are quite a few employments listed there for you. Uh, uh, one thing I'd like to point out, um, I know that several of you were asking about an ag. We, we found a, uh, what I believe is a very good replacement for that position. Um, there's also, uh, a long-term substitute listed there, a high school learning support, uh, first grade position. Uh, in addition to that, we have, uh, several individuals that have been with us, uh, on a year-to-year basis that will be renewing at this point in time as well. Uh, number 23, we have the high school department chairs, uh, listed for you. We also have the item 24, the middle school instructional and grade level leaders for 2021. Uh, we have a job description listed for you, uh, for director of technology. I want to be clear that that is a restructuring of some of the things that we have been paying the IU to do. And in order to accomplish the, instead of paying the IU, we'd like to, uh, have our person, uh, be able to take care of the network, things that we've been sending their way. And hopefully that's some, uh, savings down the road for us, uh, in that position. Um, also have a job description for assistant to the superintendent. Um, yeah, we believe that, um, Mr. Reese's old title does not completely, is not completely appropriate for him anymore. Uh, his, his tasks have changed with, with my arrival and maybe some of my areas of expertise and also the addition of Kelly uh, in our, in our pupil services role. Uh, and believe that that job description fits what he does a little bit better. I will also note on item 27, that, uh, that title change for him, uh, it comes at, at no additional cost to the district. Um, as a matter of fact, you may notice that that salary is identical to what he received for this school year. Um, I want to thank him for that. Also, we have several staff advancements for academic credits, um, listed for you. Uh, we also have staff for the extended school year. Um, unfortunately, currently, right now, we're still online with that, um, but, uh, we do have staff prepared to do that. And that is the end of human relations.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding these items?
I guess I would just like to say, um, over the course of the last three months, as we've seen a number of folks leave the district, whether to resignation or retirement, I regret that we've not been able to hold public um, acknowledgements of them, but I just want to say on behalf of the board that we appreciate the service that so many people that have left since the beginning of the pandemic have provided to the district to include those listed today.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve items 20 through 29 as presented?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Next, moving on to item H, we have reports from our representatives. First, we have Career and Technology Center. Director Klein, do you have a report for this evening?
I have nothing to report this month.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is the intermediate unit, um, Director Murray, do you have anything to report? And Director Murray, are you muted?
Thank you, sorry. I do just have a few things that I'd like to share, um, from our um, executive director at the IU. He had some, some, uh, just, uh, words of wisdom and, and words of peace to offer to the staff at the IU and, and if, with your permission, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to read what he, uh, wrote to, to his staff and, and ultimately to the board, um, as well. He said, "Across the United States, we are witnessing anguish, sorrow, and frustration over the issues of injustice and racism. Sadly, George Floyd is only, um, one of the most recent victims. While I don't have all the right words, nor do I have a particular solution, these words from the Declaration of Independence do come to mind. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men and women are created equal and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The unacceptable actions we are seeing in the news today stand in opposition to the intent of our nation's founders and violate the rights of some of our citizens, seemingly based on their race or their outward appearances. As a nation of diverse people, despite our outward differences, we are each more similar to one another than not. We call upon the leaders of our nation to bring calm to the current crisis and restore our nation to one where all people can live without fear of discrimination, injustice, or the senseless loss of life. The unlawful mistreatment of any of us, especially by those in authority over us, creates harm for all of us. We cannot be a nation of laws and rights that exist only for some. Our nation must return to one that seeks justice, loves mercy, and walks humbly together. During these difficult times, I find myself reflecting on the key keys to the culture adopted by the IU 13. We are a diverse organization and we need to extend empathy, kindness, and gratitude to all to recognize the value of all humanity and to intentionally and purposely choose to focus on our similarities with people. We must do this together and in support of one another." And that's Brian Barnhart, uh, from the IU and, you know, his words just really touched my heart. I know they're coming directly from his heart. Um, I've said this before and I'll say it again, it, it's a privilege to serve on the, the IU board. It's a privilege to serve with Dr. Barnhart. Um, the IU continues to be a, a wonderful resource for her, for us. And I just wanted to, uh, just highlight, um, you know, Brian's really the heart of that organization and, um, and, and I just wanted to again highlight what an outstanding organization the IU 13 is. So thanks for your, thanks for listening.
Thank you for sharing, I really appreciated hearing that. I think that at these very difficult times, it's especially important to continue listening and to continue that conversation. Um, moving on, I almost forgot where we were after that. Uh, moving on to our legislative PSBA liaison, Director Stichellic, do you have anything to report tonight?
I am actually going to pass this over to Director Nom.
So very quickly, I just wanted to, uh, uh, inform the board that on May 29th, the governor signed into law a budget for this coming year. Uh, that budget includes 12 months of sustained public education funding at 2019 to 20 levels. And it also includes the disbursement of two sources of funding, um, for the state. The first is from the state's special funds and the second is from the federal COVID grants. Uh, the intent of this budget, I think, um, I believe it's a five-month budget for the rest of the state, but it's a 12-month budget for schools. So, uh, based on that, we are funded, uh, through the next school year. Uh, it looks to be, and, and Dr. Messinger can maybe elaborate if, if he knows more, but it looks to be that we should expect level funding this year from the state, which is a piece of good news. The only caveat that I have to that is there, uh, was another statement, uh, signed by the governor, uh, uh, around the same time that indicated that he was still willing to exercise punitive actions against counties that opened in advance of his order. Uh, I don't know what that means. Under his initial indication, it, it appeared as if the withholding of federal funds may be an option for, for counties such as Lebanon, but I think we'll just have to wait and see. But at this point, I think the signs are good. Um, a little piece of positive news, it's not obviously going to fix our budget situation, um, but it is a good news that we are not getting reduced funding. So, uh, that's the report from the legislative PSBA.
And I'll, I'll confirm that, um, we were initially anticipating a $230, $230,000 increase from the state. Uh, however, when this hit, uh, Mrs. Martin, uh, predicted level funding, that's the numbers that she gave us. Um, and, and it reduced our revenue by 230,000, but she was right on with that. And, uh, if, if, if her predictions hold true with the local revenues as well, then I think we're well-prepared for for next year despite having some, uh, challenges to get it to where we needed it to be.
Thank you for that report, Director Nom. Next is item, I knew business. Is there any new business for discussion this evening? We do have a few dates to announce. Um, tomorrow, June 3rd, is the baccalaureate service. Um, that can be attended virtually, presumably that will be available on the district website. Um, next month, uh, so, uh, next week, I apologize, there is no June 9th board meeting. Um, if that would change for some reason, that would be announced and published publicly. Um, but as of this point, we have covered everything that we need to cover for the uh, moving on to July, that was preview, previously scheduled as a meeting on an as-needed basis. Um, so that is July 14th at 6:30 virtually if needed. So we will announce if we are not having that meeting. Uh, but the default is that we will have that virtual meeting. Is there any other business for discussion this evening? Uh, um, hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there any discussion? This is, this is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has carried. I would like to wish everyone a fun and a safe summer and say congratulations to all of our 2020 graduates. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.